Okay, it's five o'clock. I'd like to call the MPC meeting to order. On November sixth. And has everybody had an opportunity to look at the agenda? Any additions or missions? Somebody care to make a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Member Kent. Appreciate that. All those in favor? Thank you. So then we can move on to our first item on the agenda, four point one. Autobody and Paint Shop, Senior Development Officer Kirk. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, adoption of minutes. Thank you very much. I was trying to get out of here fast. So has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes? Member Ross?
Thank you, Terry Goldson. I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Thank you and unanimous. Now we'll move on to four point one. Autobody and Paint Shop, Senior Development Officer Kirk.
Thank you, Turk Alexin. So item four point one is for an autobody and paint shop to operate out of Unit 5710252 Street, where it is zoned University Commercial District. An autobody and paint shop is a listed discretionary use in Unit Five only, as per LaCombe City Council's September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four approval of a site-specific land use bylaw amendment, which was approved under bylaw four hundred point six zero. Autobody and paint shop means development for the repair and/or painting of motor vehicle bodies and frames, and for damaged motor vehicle appraisal services. Administration supports the application. Neighboring property consultations are required for the land use bylaw. Twenty-four property owners within sixty meters of the subject site were notified. One response was received in opposition. However, the respondent did note that they would be in support of the application subject to suggested permit conditions, which have, most of them have been added to the development permit. So the comments were about fire. Unit Five walls need to be two-hour rated, as per the National Building Code and the National Fire Protection Association, or Prevention, sorry. Alphamable materials need to be stored in fireproof cabinets with fireproof secondary containment, sufficient to contain all liquids not in non-alphamable containers. And spray booths need to have a fire suppression system in place within the booth. Administration's response is that the applicant will be required to ensure that Unit Five complies with any bylaws, orders, or regulations. So this is including but not limited to the Safety Codes Act, the National Building Code of Canada, and the National Fire Protection Association. If the development permit application is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain a valid building permit, which includes a safety inspection of Unit Five completed by a safety codes officer. These requirements are included as conditions number one, number three, number four, and number five of the development permit. There was comments on emissions and odors. So all paint and solvent vapors and particles must be mitigated prior to external venting and install correct paint booth ventilation system, including an air makeup system. And just to share that the mitigate vapors and particles from directly entering adjacent units' air intake systems. So administration's response is again, if it's approved, then the applicant will be required to comply with any bylaws or orders. And they also have to ensure that no order of paint in relation to the autobody and paint shop leaves the boundary of the property. And these requirements are included as condition number one, number five, and number six of the development permit. Permit comments. So owner-tenant shall obtain city LaCombe permits for all electrical and structural changes to the unit and any other permits which may be required. And again, if the development permit is approved, then the applicant will be required to comply with the bylaws and orders, which includes getting permits. And these requirements are included as condition number one and number three of the development permit. Timeframe comments. So all required permits shall be applied for within fourteen days. Hazardous material storage shall be completed within thirty days. All other conditions shall be in compliance within a hundred and eighty days. And if all conditions have not been complied with within a hundred and eighty days, the DP approval from the DP approval date, then approval shall be null and void. Unit owner-tenant will be out of compliance and shall cease operations immediately. So administration's response is that timeframes shall be in accordance with the land use bylaw and any other bylaws, orders, or regulations. And failure to comply with our timelines requirements will result in enforcement action, such as the issuance of a stop order. So on April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, LaCombe City Council approved a site-specific land use bylaw amendment to allow the autobody and paint shop to operate as a temporary use, permitted use, from Unit Eleven of the same building. A development permit was issued after that approval went through. On April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, it went back for a land use bylaw amendment to make that a permanent use, which was approved as a discretionary permanent use. So development permit was issued after that. And in twenty-twenty-four, the business relocated to Unit Five of the same building for reasons on rental prices. Unit Five is larger than Unit Eleven, and Unit Five is located at the rear of the building and away from the residential properties. On September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, council did approve the site-specific land use bylaw amendment to allow the autobody and paint shop to operate permanently as a discretionary use from Unit Five. So a development permit is going to be required, which has been applied for and what you're considering on tonight. Analysis. So the shop specializes in restorations, small light repairs, custom work, and support training through apprenticeships. Their shop is low volume, focusing on two to three vehicles per month, and they only take on vehicles that they can fit inside of the shop. So there's no need for outdoor storage. Their hours of operation are Monday to Friday from eight AM to four PM. Existing uses. So the subject building contains a total of twenty units. And the blow chart does provide a list of all the uses taking place from the building, as per recent site inspection. So a lot of them are manufacturing, warehousing, office, retail sales, and then the autobody and paint shop. Parking. There's approximately a hundred and seven paved vehicle parking spaces located on the subject site, just shown in yellow there in the bottom right-hand corner. Parking will be shared with the existing businesses operating from the building. The autobody and paint shop would require five onsite vehicle parking spaces. A total of fifty-four spaces is required for all the uses taking place from the building, including the proposed autobody and paint shop. And the site does exceed the land use bylaws parking requirements. Signage. So the existing building contains signage casings for each unit, which were pre-approved in two thousand and six when the building was first constructed. So the applicant is permitted to change out the copy in the signage casing without requiring a development permit. However, the casing must not be enlarged, altered, or removed unless a valid development permit has been obtained. And administration's recommendation is that the Municipal Planning Commission approve the development permit for the autobody and paint shop. Thank you, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Development Officer Kirk. I appreciate that. Any questions from members? Member Ross?
Thank you, Turk. Golekson, this was very passionately deliberated and discussed in the public hearing at council. And I'd like to make the motion that administration recommends is resolved. The Municipal Planning Commission approved the development permit for an autobody and paint shop to operate out of Unit Five seventy-one oh-two fifty-second Street, legally described as Unit Five Plan zero-six-two-eight-zero-eight-four, Zone University Commercial UC District, and with all of the following ten conditions, as long as they are absolutely understood by the applicant.
Thank you, Member Ross. Any other comments or concerns? Yes, Member Kent.
Through the chair. Just a question on process here. So just going through, it looks like it was operating out of Unit Eleven with permission, and then it moved to Unit Five without permission? Without authority or approval, just moved in and started operating?
That is correct. So the tenant was, or the business, I should say, was under the impression that the whole building had approval for him to move. So he was a little bit confused on process. And once he understood that each bay is actually individually owned, that's why you need all that separate approval again. So we had to go back to council and go through the proper motions afterwards.
Okay, yeah, because that would be a concern in regards to painting. Was the paint booth moved? Was it approved? And all the other requirements for air exchange and all that didn't seem to happen.
So the applicant is here today, and he can speak on that if you would like him to answer that question?
Would you like to speak today? Yes, yeah. Okay, come forward, please, and you can address, let us, please let us know your name and if you're the owner of the I think the business probably would be the correct thing here. Yes, person going. No, you have to turn the light on. Yes. Thank you.
So my name is Daryl Hogenson, and I'm the owner of FSK Paint Body. And I've owned that business for twenty-five years now. Moved to LaCombe, I think it was, the original date was in twenty-nineteen. And that's in, I've made LaCombe my home base. So the building, everything was approved in Bay Eleven. All the equipment is exactly the same. The booth, the ventilation, everything is exactly the same. And everything that was on top of the roof was just relocated to the other bay. It was turned to ventilate so that it didn't affect any of the other intakes that are around, because it was properly installed by Ares Airflow. So they made sure that it didn't interfere with anybody. But as far as the air makeup unit, the paint booth, everything is exactly the same as it was in Bay Eleven. There has been no changes in equipment, no changes in the way it works. It was just taken apart and moved.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other question?
Yeah, it was a concern, like. How did you just thought you could move it from one bay to the other without all the
Because I gave, because I gave notice. Okay, so the president of the, the president and the existing bay owner of Bay Eleven told, like, when I told them that I was moving because they raised the rent, it just didn't make sense for the size of the bay. So I gave them a written notice and told them that I was relocating. He said, you can't just do this without giving, like, letting us know. So I gave them notice. And it was a whole process that just, like, it was all done at the public hearing. But I came to the city of LaCombe to get a business license, and I obtained a business license. And I thought that's all I needed to do. I felt that, that since it was in the same building, that once I got a building license, sorry, the business license, that I was cleared to go ahead. So I gave my written notice to the condo board. They denied getting it. I have a copy. It just, it's very political. Like, it's just very political. It gets even worse every day that I find out. But it's just honestly, the best way to sum it up is same booth, same air makeup unit, the same rules, the same way the bay is built, everything is exactly the same.
Okay, but you understand now that
Oh, yeah. You know what? I'm fifty-five. I'm still learning. And you know what? Like, it's, it's, nothing in life is ever simple, and that's, that's my journey. And that's, but the city of LaCombe has a way different way of, of doing things than the city of Red Deer. That's where I was. I don't. I'm glad I'm out of the city of Red Deer. I'm glad I'm in the city of LaCombe. So it's adapting, and it's learning how the city of LaCombe wants to do things, and that's what I'm learning.
Yes.
To the chair and member contenty, just to give you a bit of idea how the process works for us too. In terms of just being able to pick up and move, we do actually have in our fee schedule where if you do something, they'll permit you charge double the application fee, which did happen in this situation. And the applicant still will be required to obtain the proper permits if this gets approved. So there'll be an inspection process after this, if it gets approved.
Thank you very much for that. So you yeah, you said, so you're well aware of all those conditions that you just talked about, that you're gonna have to have permits again and inspections and so on?
Yeah, I'm totally fine with it because it was all passed before, and then there's nothing that's changed. And in fact, we had a fire inspection done, and they were very happy with the way we were operating the business. So that was just a random inspection from the fire department. They just came in because of a concern, and I had nothing to hide, so I gave my tour of everything.
Thank you very much, Member Contenty. Yes, can you turn your mic on, please?
Sorry. So are you operating now? Are you painting and?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so that is a concern.
Thank you. Okay, so we do, any other further comments? Yes, Member Kent?
Thanks, Chair Golekson. So in the DP conditions, the DP or VP, DP, number six. Number six is a pretty stringent requirement. Fumes from paint can, can escape through a doorway. Even so, even if it doesn't go into the booth, there's, there's chemicals used. So
Can I respond to that?
I wasn't finished, though.
Okay, I'm sorry for interrupting.
So it would be, make more sense to have that one removed off the conditions, because it is very, very stringent. I can smell, I'm in the Wolf Creek industrial area, and I smell three blocks away from the paint shops, right, from the paint autobody shops. I think some number six is really removed, because, I mean, it can travel, just vapors do travel. Are they very harmful? Probably not by, at that point in time, but I don't know. I'm just, I, I like the idea of the body shop there, but that's a pretty tough one, number six.
I was just gonna add that there were vapors. It was a concern of mine as well. And I apologize for cutting you off. But you, you kind of touched on it, that vapors come, come from anywhere. And there was vapors in the building that were paint vapors that were not coming from my bay. They were coming from another bay. And I was concerned that if that was a condition on my bay, I would be held accountable for somebody else's paint vapors, and I didn't feel that that would be very fair to me. Because even a spray can is a vapor.
Through the chair to Member Kent. So I understand it may be being between doorways and that, and maybe units may be a little restrictive, but the way the condition reads, it's to not extend past the actual property, so the blue outline there. In administration's opinion, this is something that's in the land use bylaw for our industrial standards, that odor cannot permit past the property boundaries in our light industrial. And since this is a site-specific amendment, this area is a little different than our typical industrial parks. So if we have a complaint from, let's say, the daycare or the residential or something like that, as an enforcement mechanism, it would be preferable to leave this condition in if there were some, some concerns about that.
Thank you for that, Member Kent.
Thanks, Chair Golekson. Okay, so fair enough, but how do you know it's coming from his bay? And how can we control, you can't control that. Three other people in that, in that area could be spraying out of a spray can and get the exact same vapor. I don't think that's right, because that's where the fingers will point. And I don't think it's fair at all. I agree. Thank you.
Through the chair to Member Kent. So when we follow up, like, it would be complaint-driven. We would have to deem that complaint valid. So that would mean one site inspection, multiple site inspections, to have administration pinpoint if it's coming from that business or a separate business. So it wouldn't just be someone complains, and we send an enforcement letter. There'd be a process involved to try and figure out. And if we can't figure out where it's coming from, then I guess that's a whole other story. But again, you guys, MPC, it's your discretion whether or not to leave that condition in there. But it's, administration did put it in there for adherence to our bylaw, as well as consideration for the surrounding properties.
Thank you for that, Senior Development Officer Dooley. I, I have a concern in taking it out, if it's part of our bylaws, that it's in there. And I think it being that its complaints would be investigated to find the source for that odor. I mean, it could be, it could be you, or it could be somebody else within the facility. But I would have a hard time taking that out of there if it is part of our bylaw.
Without mentioning names, there's another coating company. They're now coating, they're not manufacturing, but they're another coating company. And there's, that's just my that's just where I feel it's not fair. If it's put in a condition for me, it wasn't put in a condition for them.
Because how do you know that?
Because they're, they're, they just recently changed what they're doing.
So they're non-compliant, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a different issue.
No, but I, but I know, like, exactly what was said is that if the orders are there, the finger is gonna get pointed at body shop. And the, the volume that we do is extremely low. And that, because it's in the condition of the development permit. So I understand.
So I don't want to get in an argument here or discussion about it. But so you're saying that you would like that pulled because they don't have it, or they're non-compliant? I don't think that's correct. I think what should happen is that they should be, become compliant, as you are today, with that condition. And so they'd be under the same rules as you are, not to say, not to pull it because they're not. That, and that's my thought. And I would take some advice from Senior Development Officer Kirk or Dooley. Both lights are on.
Through the chair. So regarding if there's another business that's operating without the proper approvals in place, we would need to see a complaint come through, and then we would investigate that somewhere to any other enforcement procedure. Conferring with Development Officer Kirk, just for information, no complaints have been received on this site regarding odor to date. So this is a, if it happens, we have this mechanism, but we haven't had a history of complaints at this site today.
Thank you, Senior Development Officer Dooley. Appreciate that. Member Kent?
Thanks, Chair Golekson. That may be correct, maybe no complaints, but I think a can has been open, maybe between landlords. One leaving, one not happy, and those complaints can come in more often than none. And that finger can be pointed at the wrong people. It wasn't him that suggested taking it out. It was me. Chair Golekson suggested it was the applicant, but it was myself. And I get it. I get it from two, three blocks away, and it's just not fair, even though there's residential all the way around. That will not all the way around on two sides up. There's a school nearby. And there's a church nearby. And so it can travel from a long way, so you can get a lot of complaints.
We have a motion on the floor that includes all of the current conditions. So we would have to have an amendment to that motion to remove that condition. If the
Questions if you may ask.
Certainly.
Thank you, Chair Golekson. So really, this is a one-year permit. It's discretionary, just like the last one when he was in the other bay, correct?
Correct. It's discretionary.
And there was no, and I do, I do agree with this point, because of, you know, but yet he's done his due diligence. There has not been a complaint. But because of the I'll put it plainly, the politics of the condominium association, and that was obviously at the public hearing. Now, that may come across more, and I can see that point of dissolving that gray area. But it's still gonna be investigated fairly. But on the other hand, who is not complying with that condition should also, it should be fair, it should be enforced. So duly noted, but you know, if all of council unanimously supported the applicant, now there was more issues behind the scenes with the the MG, the Condominium Board Association bylaws do not override the MGA. That's what the question upon council was. So that is where our, the city of Combe bylaws and the MGA overrides condominium board. So that was, you know, it's, that was a good part of the discussion that night. So but hopefully his history and due diligence supersedes, you know. But I do, I do agree that that's we're trying to keep it going smoothly without interference, but did, like, is this condition standard with all autobody shops? But I mean, I do, I do kind of agree with it, but then all those are there for reasons. And if somebody else isn't compliant, then they should have the same thing put upon them, right? And if there has not been any complaints from residential or outside of the blue area, that should be duly noted that if there's all sudden complaints inside of that blue perimeter, then it's almost, sorry, but political instead of beyond reason, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So it should be subjective to support of common sense, hopefully, so.
Senior Development Officer Kirk.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that this has been a standard condition on the last development permits for the applicant. And the business that he was referring to has been sent a first notice letter. So once we get some action from them and get a development permit going, this would also be added as a condition to them. So if we did receive a complaint of orders, anybody in the building with this condition would be sent a letter advising them and reminding them of the permit condition and trying to narrow down where the odor is coming from and making sure that whoever needs to comply is complying.
Thank you for that, Member Contenty.
Yes, through the chair to Development Officers, either one. Yeah, I can understand this. We need a process enabled to, to respond to complaints. Is there anything else in the other bylaws generally that talks about too much noise, too much air pollution or anything else that would cover that, and specifically using this one in order to respond to a complaint? Or is this the best thing to do that with?
Through the chair to Member Contenty. So since this is development-based, the land use bylaw would be the best mechanism. We do have a noise bylaw. We do have a community standards bylaw. In this circumstance, since the reason the order is being admitted is because of the development.
Best place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have the motion on the floor with all of the conditions in place. I would say no. In this case, I think the business, the individual with the business is the one we want to talk to.
I can't speak.
So there's concerns outside of the conditions that have already been addressed? I don't know if that has anything to do with us.
Discussed here that we have to comply with the two-hour fire.
So he is, you're aware of that condition, obviously. Were you going to be able to meet that? That's your concern?
The way I read it is it was suggested from the surrounding, where, like, the condo board, the development permit had conditions on it that the, the the safety codes officer would, would have to approve it or deny, right?
Right.
The building Bay Eleven is built exactly the same way as Bay Five. They, all the individuals' bays were all done exactly the same way. The fire code doesn't say that we have to meet the two-hour fire rating, just based on the volume of what we have inside the bay. It's their assumption as the, it's a very political It's their assumption as the, it's a very political thing with the condo board. It's one person that is just trying to make all their own rules.
Right now that's a one hour.
Excuse me, please. Senior Development Officer Kirk.
Thank you, Chair Golikson. So I just want to confirm that there is no condition that specifically states he has to have two hour firewall rating. The condition is that if this is approved, he would need to get a building permit. Once he has that in place, the safety codes officer would do an inspection. And if he deems under code that you need the two hour rating, that's when you would need it.
Thank you very much for clarification. So this is the first step of that. And it would, uh, that would be determined afterwards depending on the conditions. Okay? And that is not part of these conditions. Thank you very much. Member Ross.
Thank you, Chair Golikson. So the inspector, inspector, that is beyond the city and NPC and so forth. The inspector and the safety inspections is in itself entirely different than what it. So that is all due respect, out of the control of planning and development, the applicant, NPC, everything else. That inspector has safety codes to abide by. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that is out of, really out of our discussion here tonight of what we are here for. So uh, all due respect to the owner of the building, that is not what is discussion here tonight. If that is put in place by the inspector, that is beyond the control of our administration staff of planning and development. And NPC and basically the city. So that's all due respect. That's not what's in discussion here tonight. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Member Ross. And so those conditions that are in listed in here are the ones you have to adhere to on behalf of us. And those are the only ones.
Yeah, I, I.
You understand that.
Yeah, I, I read it and the what, like, I don't want to sound naive, but I'm operating the exactly the same way when the first inspection was done. And I had more praise than I had negative negativity. So I'm just hoping that because
Well, then, so you had, you had inspections done at your other location.
Yeah, at bay 11.
So this is your first step and then you get, you get your inspections and go from there. We're not making the decisions on both.
I understand that. I respect that and I appreciate that. I just feel that, I feel okay with it because
Well, that's, that's good.
It was passed in bay 11. The building is built exactly the same way. I'm operating exactly the same way.
So that, that is up to the inspectors to decide because other than maybe one person in this room, the rest of us haven't, we don't have the ability. Or the, if you're talking natural gas, maybe I could help you on that, but I, the other side I cannot. And I think we all have our own skills, but we cannot uh, give you that. Uh, that's not our purpose here today. Our purpose here is to make a decision based on the conditions that are here.
Deep everybody.
Yeah. Yes. And there is a mo- motion on the floor. Is there any amendments then to that motion? No? Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will call the vote. All those in favor. Approved. Now you go to your next steps.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this still on?
Okay onward and upward. Next, we have a daycare facility four point two and Senior Development Officer duly in this case. You get paid all this stuff.
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Golikson. So this is uh, for an extension of time for a conditionally approved daycare facility. Uh, it's located on units five, six, and seven at four zero one three fifty third avenue. And it is zoned light industrial or I one district. Uh, the original development permit was issued on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The permit is valid for a period of twelve months from the date of issue. And if at the expiry of this period, the development has not been commenced with reasonable diligence, the permit shall be null and void. So that's one of the existing conditions on the conditionally approved development permit. Uh, the applicant did apply for an extension of time prior to the expiry of the existing development permit. Section four point ten point three, the land use bylaw states that if the development authorized by development perm is not commenced in twelve months. They have to apply for a extension of time. Um, the applicant requires an extension of time as grant funding for the development was recently awarded and construction was not able to commence until such time as that grant funding had been received. The applicant's building permit is set to expire in January twenty twenty-five. And the applicant anticipates that construction will be complete in April of twenty twenty-five. So an extension of time to the building permit may be granted once an extension of time to the development permit has been issued. Uh, neighboring property consultations are required as part of the land use bylaw, section four point six. Uh, five property owners were notified within sixty meters of the subject site and one letter of support was received. Surrounding parcel is on light industrial, community services and green space district. And as the municipal planning commission was the original development authority on this application, the extension of time request is being referred to the municipal, municipal planning commission for a decision. As our land use bylaw currently doesn't give the development officers discretion to be the development authority on this one was previously the municipal planning commission. Uh, the proposed extension of time request aligns the land use bylaw and administration believes the reason for the extension request is valid. Administration recommends extending the development permit for a period of twelve months expiring November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, which is when it was originally scheduled to expire on November seventeenth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, staff recommendation is that the municipal planning commission extend the expiry date of the conditionally approved development permit for a daycare facility uh, with the listed conditions. And I believe the applicant snuck in and they are here uh, this evening.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Uh, member Ross.
Uh, thank you, Chair Golikson. Uh, I think it is important to keep in mind that the applicant has done everything possible in the due diligence. It's very unfortunate that uh, how do you put it politely? The provincial red tape did not work in the applicant's favor. Uh, thus, this expiry of the time, uh, Bob Wilson, uh, spoke to me uh, in regards to this application. And it was uh, uh, they cannot even start renovation or construction or their applica- application for the grant is denied. So that is how much frustration that the applicant has faced. So uh, uh, this has been a challenging for them. So uh, I have absolutely zero questions. This is just unfortunately a, a time process that is within the bylaws. And I'm, I'm sorry for your delay, uh, because this was, you know, a lot of discussion at council, but uh, and, and another day it was very much supported. Uh, it was delayed by NPC and because we asked for you to be your presence, which you do diligently did take that upon yourself because I, I did sometimes frustrate in that applicants are not present when there's such an important decision. And uh, once again, your representative called me and I kind of bluntly put it back to him because I've known him my whole life. So uh, with that in mind, I think this is very straightforward. This is just a time process. I'd like to take the administrations up. Uh, support the resolve that the planning com- uh, municipal planning commission extend the expiry date of the conditionally approved development permit for a daycare facility on the land zoned industrial light. Uh, it's like I one, sorry, uh, district located at four zero one three fifty third avenue. Legally described as lot twelve, block three, plan one seven two zero six two zero. With all of those following conditions that I am not going to read.
Uh, thank you very much, Member Ross. Any other concerns or questions? No, I do. You have, oh, yep, Member Kent. I didn't see you.
Thanks, Chair Golikson. Um, so there's been a liquor store added to this, to this facility since then.
Through the chair to member Kent. You might be thinking of four point three, maybe that we're hearing next. But as far as I'm aware, in this bay, there's a church, there's the daycare facility. A vacant bay. Is that, that, okay.
I flipped over to the next page and
You're ahead of the game, kind of like me.
I apologize.
Any other concerns then with this application for the extension?
No, I just, as I, I was here for the last, um, yeah, for the last vote. And I voted no because I think a daycare should not be in an industrial area.
Yeah.
So uh, I would not be in support of it uh, at this point in time either.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, um, any other concerns? No? All those in favor of doing the extension of the timeframe? Opposed? So, so noted. Uh, member Kent supposed. Approved, so. Now we can move on to yours, Member Kent. Yeah, yeah. Four point three then, the Senior Development Officer duly. Again, I see your partner left, so they, it's all up.
Doesn't want the overtime, I guess.
Yeah.
So item four point three is for a daycare facility. Uh, this is for a new proposed daycare facility at unit one four zero four one sixty-third avenue and it's zone C two or neighborhood commercial district. Uh, daycare facility means a facility that provides care and supervision for seven or more children for more than three, but less than twenty-four consecutive hours in each day that the facility is operating and is intended to be operated at least twelve consecutive weeks per year. The property is zone neighborhood commercial, which provides an area for pedestrian oriented commercial uses and activities within a residential neighborhood. This report requests the commission's decision for a discretionary use daycare facility with a one stall parking variance in the C two district of land use bylaw. Uh, daycare facility is a listed discretionary use. Neighboring property consultations are required as part of the land use bylaw. Um, eight property owners within sixty meters of the subject site were notified and one letter of opposition and one letter of support were received. Uh, in summary, for the neighborhood consultation, uh, there was just one that had checked off support. So administration does not have a response to that. Uh, in opposition on the one letter, there was a few points made, the first being proximity to an industrial commercial business that produces noise and odor. Um, adjacent properties are zoned highway, commercial district and residential detached, detached district. Uh, there are no industrially zoned properties uh, in near proximity to this proposed daycare facility. Administration does appreciate the adjacent landowner identifying potential future concerns. Uh, but as adjacent properties are zoned commercial and residential, any noise or odor should not extend past the property boundary of that parcel. Um, the second issue being that parking will be an issue with daycare users utilizing the church parking lot or an adjacent parking lot for easier access. And they put in their letter that a fence should be installed between adjacent properties. Uh, the proposed development requires a one stall parking variance from the required eleven stalls to ten stalls. However, the site itself does still exceed the requirements of the land use bylaw. Administration does not have concerns of the variance, the peak drop off and pickup times predominantly being the drop off times in the morning are outside of peak traffic times of the other businesses located within the building. Uh, all users of the daycare facility will be required to adhere to the traffic act. And a fence is currently proposed around the green space area, but no fencing around the site is proposed or being recommended as a condition of approval at this time. Uh, the applicant is proposing to locate the daycare facilities in the lease bay building. Uh, they will have ten parking stalls with two stalls being accessible stalls. Uh, the applicant is required to have eleven stalls under the land use bylaw. So one stall or nine percent variance is required. At several of the businesses in lease bay are not open during peak drop off time. So there's a, a restaurant, um, and a liquor store. Uh, that would not be open in the mornings during drop off, but they would be open during pickup in the evenings. Um, administration does not anticipate concerns with parking onsite. And the proposed outdoor play area has access from the rear of the building, although that will not be used as entry. It'll be purely for exit to the play area. Uh, that area does have a proposed uh, six foot high black metal fence around that green space. And access to the property is via sixty-third avenue. The proposed development will accommodate up to sixty-three children between the ages of nineteen months to six years old. Proposed hours of operation will be Monday to Sunday from six AM to midnight. The lease bay building has three existing businesses located in the building, being a convenience store, a liquor store and a restaurant. The parking onsite was approved under a previous development permit being development permit sixty-one slash two five one ninety-five seventeen for thirty-six stalls. There's a breakdown below that shows that there are still three stalls remaining overall on the site. Uh, the applicant is proposing a two hundred and sixty-five square meter outdoor play area that will be fenced with a six foot high black metal fence. And that's going to be on the south side of the property. Uh, the proposed development is located in a district that accommodates a daycare facility as a discretionary use. And administration does not have concerns with the proposed development. Uh, here are some site photos um, that show some of the existing businesses. Staff recommendation is that the municipal planning commission approve the development permit for a daycare facility with a one stall or nine percent parking variance uh, subject to the listed conditions. Uh, the applicant and the landowner are here today.
Thank you for that. Senior Development Officer duly. Why do I have so much trouble with Senior Development Officer? Maybe acting manager, maybe it's the wrong title. That's the problem. Okay, that might be the, the problem. Okay, thank you very much. Any comments? Uh, Member Ross.
I think we, Chair, Chair Golikson, uh, obviously when you start with daycare, there's a whole new standards and codes and so pertaining to daycares that is enforced by the provincial government for this, that is really out of our decision-making process tonight as well. Uh, as what was already brought, brought up by Member Kent said, yeah, it is, it is kind of a first impression concern. But there is also that uh, daycare across from the LMC that has a liquor store right down next door as well, which I do understand this first question because if I recall when we were doing the uh, pot store discussion in our first term, we, I think there could be no liquor store within a school. Certain distance of a school which took out winks. And yet I understand when you come right that up because then that brings back my memory is we're, we're putting in our own bylaws of no pot store within a certain distance, but yet we have liquor stores within daycares. So I kind of bring back, back, back to memory from our first term of discussion. It was kind of like, uh, this brings back. But when there's another one that's in the same building, this is kind of the same thing too. So it's kind of but I do understand where you're coming from because when we were putting in the pot bylaws, which is really categorized by the GLC at liquor stores, it's not to be around schools.
So, thank you for that. Uh, any other discussion or concerns regarding this? No? Through the chair, just to comment to members.
There is quite a difference between schools and daycares in regards to access and access the these, these kids aren't running around the streets and going out of class. And so there, there is quite a difference in that.
Thank you for that. Uh, no other discussion? Yeah, you've done two. You could go for all three. Member content.
Motion is here, so I get it right.
Where did you?
There it is. Uh, the commotion that the music planning commission approved the development permit for a daycare facility with the one stall. Nine percent parking variance to be located at union, unit one, four zero four one sixty-third avenue. Lot twenty-five, block three, plan one eight two zero five four three, zoned neighborhood commercials, C two district. This approval is subject to the following conditions as listed.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? No? All right, I'll call the vote. And all those in favor? Thank you for that. You're approved. It's pretty easy. Yeah, didn't have to talk even. Uh, that was, you're welcome. Good luck with that, by the way. I think there's a need for it up in that part of town. So appreciate you coming in there and filling that spot. It'll I think it's a great addition to that business or that uh, area there. So. All right. They did. Owners and business people, yeah. Well, why not? You never know. So our next meeting is November twentieth. Anything? Thank you for that. No meeting. So the mayor will be back for the next one for sure. I know two in a row, one more. He's, he's gone. He's going to be hunted. Well, and he's picks, picks the tough ones too. Okay. And so uh, what else do we have on here? You got any, you have some permits that you approved? No? Something better. Uh, do we want that on air? I guess we can have it on air.
Yeah.
All right. You wanted to have the discussion regarding an appeal, I think.
Yeah. Um, so we just wanted to make everyone aware that we did receive two appeals on sixteen Taylor Drive. The oversized garage that was approved on October second. So a regional subdivision and development appeal board hearing has been scheduled for November nineteenth at five thirty PM in council chambers at city hall. So we will go there and explain everything and present, and then they will have thirty day, fourteen days to make a written decision. So we will provide you guys with that written decision once it's available.
So it'll be into the new year pretty much by the time we
Probably, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. So just a little what's up? What's up? Are you sure? You're going to be very busy.
To the chair and the members of the board, legally, the subdivision to go on appeal board has to issue a written decision within fourteen days of the hearing being closed. So as long as they close the hearing on November nineteenth, we will get a written decision that will just then, then we'll just forward off to you guys. Or we'll bring forward at the next municipal planning commission meeting, which we most likely will have one at the beginning of December because of an application received. That may or may not be making some variances.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be better than, than being into the first part of the year. And if it's the first week, I won't be here. So that's really good. Oh, there you go. Yeah, me too. Okay, so I just need one more motion here. There's nothing else from planning.
So technically, no, but you have to be deemed an affected party. So anyone within that sixty meter radius gets a letter notifying them of the decision. When you appeal to the regional subdivision and development appeal board, your reasons for appeal have to be deemed valid. So it can't just be, I don't like it. It has to actually have some planning rationale so that at that level, the appeal has a little bit more weight than just writing in a letter of concern. Coming to MPC before a decision's been made.
To say lower it to a certain height as a condition, for example.
To member Kent or to member Ross. So, sorry, guys. The, the board can actually impose those conditions where they would then specify a certain height, a certain size. As part of their written decision. So yes, they can make those amendments as, as is their purview.
And that would, at that point would give the applicant the opportunity to decide if he wanted to go ahead or not, right?
Sorry, just, I guess one more on that note. If the applicant is unhappy with the decision. Or if someone else wants to appeal it to a higher body, you'd have to go to the court of King's bench. They would have to be granted to leave by the court for that appeal to be heard at that level. So. There is still one more avenue for an appeal, but most likely it doesn't get to that point.
Do this officially. It only can be in areas of law and jurisdiction. So was there bias? Was there? Yeah, the outside of their process, decision-making. So it can't be just the decision of the technical matter.
Interesting. So nobody wants, we're going to sit here all night?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, Member Ross. All those in favor?